Alrighty, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Rosalind, why don't you lead us in pledge of allegiance? You just start and we'll join in.
Okay. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands on one nation, one nation. And God in his soul, for liberty, justice, and...
So, I guess all the meetings order first, but uh. I did the pledge, all members of the present. Comments from the selectmen, I'll just go quickly here. Vicky Duffy Pavilion, I received your email today, I just. Really didn't look at, but I will shortly, I have a meeting with our attorney tomorrow to. See if we have an agreement on legal documents, if you can believe it still, so we're not. There yet, we will call another meeting to fully discuss. Once we get there. Alright?
Great, yeah, I mean, I, just for the public record, I sent the email just to make sure that you had like the framework of questions. That I've been receiving from public, that I think we should be prepared, right answer is all.
Yep.
So.
As to where, I'm trying to think why I put that on there, not positive.
Did it have anything, my guess was maybe you've had conversations with them about potentially taking over some of the.
No, no, it wasn't that. I know they were putting in a new floor. And I was gonna recommend that we help them pay for some of that floor surplus. They wanna put in a nice, like something, well not like this, but. You know, they have a, that they're, that room that they entertain in and dine in. Is getting an upgrade and the floor is like thirty-five grand and they're trying to fundraise for it. And I thought the town could assist with that because it'll make it more successful there, or make it more welcoming, people wanna go. I'll leave the MIRA discussion until a little bit later here. Ian, why don't you guys, if you have any comments? Happy to hear them.
Two comments, really both questions back at you Carl. I think, one, we don't have to get into now, is just following up in terms of next steps for charter revision process.
Yeah, I reached out to the DTC.
Yep.
And said, if you have names, send them to me, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
I talked to Deb not that long ago, I'm, I had coffee with her.
Okay.
And so I think. I, I'm pretty sure I can come up with four or five and then, you know, that's, we talked about it.
Okay, so basically we need to come up with the.
Names, and then we can start the commission name happening this November, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Unless. We just wanted to tweak it, if there was more than tweaking, it, you know. It's gonna take longer. So.
Alright, I'll circle back with, with her then. And then the other question is just following up on Vicky Duffy. When we have. An agreed upon contract, are we gonna go have a discussion about that at Board of Selectmen meeting first, or are we gonna go right to a public?
No, we will have a discussion here.
Okay.
It may be a special meeting, but maybe our next meeting.
Okay.
This is gonna be full on, as public as we can make it, like. Everything out there.
Great.
The documents will be online, they'll be everywhere, you can look for them.
Great.
So.
Great, thank you.
Scotty?
Well, I missed celebrating, you know, old, old favorite this weekend, but I heard it was great. And I certainly appreciate all the efforts of, you know, that organizing committee that's, that's done this, that brainchilded three years ago and it's evolved. And I think it's a, a hit for years to come.
Yeah. It's funny. Yeah, there, I think there need to be some changes. Not, and we're gonna meet. Next week as a debrief, people just didn't have time this week. But we, we're gonna debrief and we're gonna figure out what to do differently, like we had ten vendors not show up, well food vendors, didn't hurt the day. But we don't charge a lot of money, we charge like seventy-five dollars for early reg, a hundred dollars if you're after January, you know, whatever. Maybe we charge three hundred and you get two hundred back.
Yeah.
If, if you show up. Because, let's say we make it a little bit more compact and we're relying on fifteen food vendors and then that five don't show up or something. So we have to figure that out, it's a very. The band was great, band was outstanding, I don't know if you guys were there, band was great, it was too hot. To stand in front of the band on asphalt in the sun. People were huddled under whatever shade they want, they loved the band, they applauded for the band, every song. I think something needs to change, I don't, it's a great spot for the band, it's not a great spot for the audience. So maybe it changed, so there's some things we need to look at. I think, and we'll get feedback. We're gonna do a survey, Jennifer got emails from every vendor, when they registered, we're gonna have our HR company who did a great survey for Chief of Police. We're gonna do ten questions, we'll get our responses, they'll do it. It's inexpensive, it'll be really well done and we'll share it with group. I think that's a good thing to do. We did that last year, but this year we're gonna follow up on it a little bit more carefully. Just seeing, Beaver Dam Trail has started, that project, I've been hearing about for four years. We had a pre-construction meeting on Chalkers Mill Pond Dam today. The sidewalks on Route One have not started, that's the Connecticut Water Company doing a project over by Dairy Queen before we can start our sidewalk project. And just seeing if there's anything else. In my. Calendar that I'm just forgetting. And. Summertime, so I'm getting complaints about tree growth, of course dispatcher negotiations are a little stalled, they canceled their dates recently. So we have to pick new date, which is a little bit frustrating. And anyway, well, let's move on.
One other question, the new chamber executive director, I think it's Andrew, have you had a chance to meet with him?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you think we should have him in?
Yes. Yeah, why don't we have him there? Be good to. Andrew Surprise. And we wish duty well, she's there for another six days, she's, she went out. Like she's always gone out helping us to the last minute, it's a great saver, like a trooper, awesome, so. Alright, move approval of the June third minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, can you guys see them?
Yep.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move approval of the June tenth. Board of Selectmen meeting, I'll move that, is there a second?
Second, wait.
Everybody good?
Everybody's good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna do a couple more things and we're gonna come right back to you. We're gonna do item six B with the board's consensus. I'll move approval of the release of the encroachment permit. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna do another, oh, I had, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier when I talked about the town meeting. The Board of Finance approved already. That any, the Public Works Department, because they've been short all year. They have extra funds and those are, those are funds, as I said earlier, off the record. That we don't want to drop to the bottom line, we don't need that surplus metal. We want Bill to be able to do curbing and pave roads and fix culverts and do catch basins and mow lawns more and all that type of stuff. So the idea is. To, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, we can discuss it in a second, to approve based on Board of Finance recommendation. A transfer of two hundred thousand from DPW general fund account to the off-bait budget paving and road maintenance fund, seventy-four hundred for the purpose of paving and repairing roads. Have you seen the memo attached?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Questions? It's just. Bill was at our meeting at Board of Finance and he just said, look. Oh, and for instance, I'll give you a, for instance, on this. He came into me and said, on Stonebolt Road. The road, a pipe had collapsed and so the road was doing this. He just doesn't have time to take his guys with mowing season and go in there and fix it, he had Duncan, Duncan, go. It's gonna, you know. If we do it, we're gonna pay for materials and it's just manpower that are on payroll, if Duncan does it, does it, it's like twenty-five grand, but it gets done. So this is giving him permission to like farm out a couple projects to just get them done, essentially, is what it's doing. And that was the example. No questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that would be the special town meeting, I'll move the special town meeting.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that?
Enjoy. So that'll be. A few enjoy anything, so just do that right before I start.
Yeah. And I just figured, it's such a non-issue, we'll do it then, just get it off the books and let's get it going. So alright, motion and second has been made on town meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's just talk MIRA super quick. I've, I've, but you got, kept the guys in the loop on this pretty well. This has to end, MIRA must end on June thirtieth. We began a meeting last Thursday that went from nine-thirty to twelve and we suspended the meeting. And then we picked it up again, like on Friday and we went for another two hours and suspended the meeting. And we had it, we recontinued it, what's, maybe it was yesterday. And now we're gonna, we suspended it after another couple hours and our continuing net meeting. On Thursday at two-thirty. Here's some, it, it's, it's actually. You guys are both smart guys, it's unless you live through these meetings and really knew this stuff inside and out, it's somewhat complicated. The statute, the law that passed that ended MIRA said, if no. I'm rewarding this, practical solution is found for the Essex towns at the Essex Transfer Station. Or the Torrington Stack towns. Which is another transfer station. Then both entities and all the garbage and shall be run by DAS, it goes to DAS. So DAS has a representative on the board of the MIRA Dissolution Authority, MDA, they want nothing to do with this. They are like, we, wow, nothing, we do not give this to us. So. We believe we have an agreement for the Essex towns, we terminate our agreement with MIRA. Essex gets the municipal permit to operate a transfer station, which currently they don't have, but it will be transferred to Essex. Essex will then contract with CWPM to run the transfer station, you're not seeing those documents. We will then contract with CWPM to take our garbage. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will contract with CWPM at one hundred and forty dollars per ton for MSW. And one hundred dollars a ton for recyclables. However. For the next two years, there's a fund, one point one million dollars, that's been put aside from MIRA reserves. So that the towns in the Essex area that are going to participate. What we did is we ran budget numbers from the recycling that we've had, the tonnage. And at a hundred dollars a ton, we think we have put aside enough money so that every town will take our recyclables. Jason Manafort from CWPM will take them to Murphy Road Recycling. He will then say, here's the bill. Will Sabre's tonnage weigh a thousand, a thousand pounds this month? Which is, and we, he then gets the rebate for the recyclables, so technically. We're being held harmless for our recyclables, which is consistent with the contract that we had through MIRA. Where we only paid for MSW, not recyclables. But that world has ended, but. We were saying, or what I was saying as a, as an Essex town. No, I'm, I don't want MIRA to end, DAS, I'm gonna make you take my contract if I don't get free recyclables. So this was the agreement that the MIRA board reached with the Essex towns. Questions on that? And I'm not, we've kinda talked about a lot of this.
A lot.
But that's the, that's what you see in front of you, that's what I sent you earlier today, which came to me today, by the way, the final agreement. There's a lot of moving parts here, now. The Torrington situation is entirely different. I won't go into it because it's a mess. It may be that Torrington does go to DAS and the Essex towns. Do what I said, then a glitch came, well, it's, it was an executive session, so I'm not gonna talk about it. But anyway, that's this, go ahead.
So I have not had a chance, because this came in today, to like read through this with fine toothed gum.
Yeah, didn't we, did I send you something before though, I thought you've seen other documents that were either like this or similar to this.
Potentially.
Okay, let me, let me say this, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
I believe I have the authority because. I don't wanna say that, I'm not gonna say that, can we, so, go ahead.
This needs to be signed or executed by the town before June thirtieth.
If, if on Thursday it's approved by the MIRA.
It's approved by the MIRA boards, okay. My other question is in terms of framing this, was really rhetorical. What are our other options, right, there are, from my point of view, we have no other options.
There are not, and the good news about this agreement, if it goes through. Is we are going to pay what we would have been paying under our MIRA contract for the next two years. So that was the whole idea, hold me harmless for two years.
Yep.
Then I'll go to the Wild West.
Yep. You mentioned that Essex, the permit needs to be transferred to Essex.
That's happening.
So there's not, or is there any potential of the permit not transferring and us suddenly in July and not having a place to take our garbage?
There is no. It won't be because of the permit, if that doesn't happen.
Okay.
It'll be because. It'll be because. The MIRA board failed to act and all the contracts fall up to DAS.
Got it.
But we will. That would be a disaster.
Right.
Even though that's where the, the statute was written. The law was written that way.
Right, there's been effectively no move to create infrastructure for that transfer.
They should not have put this deadline on us.
Yeah.
And this is what's dropped, we're talking about going to the cheer.
Yeah, this isn't transparent.
And, which is a huge problem in the state.
Yeah.
So. Because we've been working on this along, all the towns, by the way, all the towns that were going to the Essex Transfer Station are continuing to go with these terms, every one of them. So we are all as happy as we can be.
So that's, I just wanna be clear, so all of the towns are gonna, that are able to go to the Essex Transfer Station are going to.
That are currently going.
That are currently going.
Under the MIRA agreement, will, are continuing to go to it, so we're still as a group.
Okay, so if another town decided not to do that at the last minute, their board.
Well, didn't.
Sign this, that, or this?
Uh, no, it does not, no, it does, absolutely does not. Once I enter an agreement, where we enter into an agreement with CWPM, it's fine, they're great. So. Really, the, those are the terms. But there's.
Yeah.
Terms are really in the attachment. And I'm, I'm sorry for getting it to you so late because that is exactly when I got it.
No, I, I understand, I ju, I just wanted to be transparent about the level of time I put into it.
Yeah, and, and I just have. Well, the good news is I, I have tried to give you the updates over, of course, and I can.
Five years.
Give you as much, as much of an assurance as possible. That. As simple as it sounded, those are the, that's the.
Yeah, that generally matches to what I said, but I think it's important. We don't have other options, the town.
We don't, but we're probably gonna have to seek one in.
Yeah, right.
So if, you, you can also. Did we move this?
We did not.
Okay, so. I don't know how you wanna proceed, you wanna, if you, or do you wanna stay?
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable going.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna move it.
I'll second.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we talked about it.
With some of the reservations, but giving you my best assurance that those are the terms. Assuming. This is contingent on a vote on Thursday afternoon, sometime between two-thirty and five. And I'll let you know, okay? So. I suppose I could call a quick meeting for Thursday at five? Remote meeting, not my preference, but. Don't you, I don't wanna put pressure on you.
You're, you're not putting pressure on me, that, like, situation is putting pressure on us, like, town.
You have no idea.
That's what I, people need to understand, it's not that we're, we're taking the easy route, like, there are no other routes. I mean, we went out, you went out to, we did a.
We did an RFP.
An RFP last year.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
And the results were more expensive than that, that's certain.
Good context.
Certain.
Yeah.
Especially with the recite, when you factor in the recite of this. Get, being free.
Yeah.
So, so, alright, I moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're on.
Thank you. Um, good evening, gentlemen, my name is Rosalind Garrett and I've been working hand in hand with the OSMS and OSHS to create a smoother transition between schools. Recently, I was elected Miss President of twenty twenty-five on my campaign, the transition between OSMS and OSHS. Before that, I spoke to the former leadership council of eighth grade, the vice principal of the high school, Mr. Falcone. Associate principal of the middle school, Mr. Walton, and found out the key issues which are. Time management, studying slash memorization, homework, grading, and the workload. Although this problem is currently being worked on, I am transitioning into high school myself. Which will help me work hand in hand with middle school and high school. As Miss President, I am a student advocate for this issue and will advertise students' needs and voices in significant decisions. That will help the student body with the transition. After meeting with Mr. Walton and Mrs. Castro, they have also brought my attention that everyone adapts to new situations differently. While some may have no trouble with the experience, others may struggle and their work ethic can diminish. One way I can solve this will be having conversion charts for standard-based grading in every class. Sorry? Um, while Old Saybrook High School focuses on grades on a fifty-point scale and GPA calculations, the middle school has a more developmental focus with. That works on foundational skills and personal growth. While some teachers provide these versions of charts, it would be extremely helpful if it were mandatory. For example, a student who gets threes on the middle school rubric, which is known as mastery, will be extremely can surprise when they learn that a three could be equivalent to a B or B plus in high school. Earlier this year, I also asked former eighth graders their biggest struggles and they replied with midterm studying, workload management, and time efficiency. Over the summer, my plan is to offer and organize a day-long course where the former freshmen teach the incoming freshmen about studying tips, time management, and workload regulation. This will be a reoccurring cycle every year. This would also offer the mentors community service and a way to help their peers feel more prepared for high school. Took me a very long time to think of a campaign, because there weren't many problems I could think of with Old Saybrook and OSMS as a whole. We have incredible support like freshman orientation, PJs in prep, and so many high schoolers to talk to. However, with these extra assists that I'm planning to prepare, not only will the students feel heard, but excited for a new beginning in their academic journey. I would love any questions, comments, or concerns, and also after, if you'll find, I have like a few pamphlets for my campaign, um, just kinda talking about in general.
Do you go, you have first question, so. It's not, I'm sorry.
But it's, anyways.
Well, I'll send it to Ford.
Okay, yeah.
Ford's email to that.
Nice, very nice job, Rosalind.
Thank you.
I, I'm kind of, as a parent living it, I have a ninth grader and a seventh grader right now, so I'm like right in the midst of that transition. There's definitely a, a workload adjustment for the students, so is this idea something that is gonna be launched? This summer, or is this something that you, we have to get the administration and the board to start for next year?
Yeah, I'm hoping I can get the conversion charts this summer, because that really just needs to be talked with, with the principals, which I can get meetings with easily, and the fellow teachers. For like the eighth graders and maybe the seventh graders, it depends, and then the, um, course and things will have to be next year, just because there's. Time and meetings and scheduling, like I think I have to run some things past bigger people on, like, you know, so I can get it done smoothly.
Yeah, I went, I went to the competition and it was very well done, it was very competitive, there were nine or ten candidates. And. You know, it's, it's very competitive and the fact that you won is wonderful, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's impressive, I should say, too.
I think it's a comprehensive program that you're, you're suggesting, based on input that you've, you've heard from others and your. Your coordinating efforts amongst different schools, really challenging to put all those pieces together, I, I think that your presentation was outstanding.
Thank you.
And, you know, I wish you luck and I think it will be a challenge, you're gonna run into some roadblocks, you're gonna have, you know, kids in the summer who can't make it, the, 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 all kinds, but the thing is. A, a good friend of mine said, if you're throwing up painted canvas, some of it sticks, so. You know, you, you're giving them another opportunity to prepare and prepare more effectively for success.
Scott's former life, he was a.
Yeah, well, I think you folks know that, it was under school administration.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, thank you so much, I think it's definitely an issue that like, people don't really think it is, because they just started with the ninth grade, becoming sophomores, um, this coming year. Doing the standard-based grading, that they're kind of like the experimental group. But as I've heard from some of like my peers up in the high school and some of the principals and things that like. It's hard, it's a really hard transition and it's hard converting from something that you know to something that everyone else knows and having to work your life around that, so.
It is, and it is hard for parents too, I mean, then you grow up with a certain idea of A, B, C.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, thanks for, we, I wanted to make sure that we were all here and.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Scott, Matt and I were remote last time and I was like, that's not good, you deserve more.
Thank you so much, thank you for letting me, um, be here, it's really great.
Welcome.
Well, I'm gonna have you stay here, because the next thing we're gonna do is a little town meeting and that might be interesting from a civic perspective.
Yeah.
And your mother can even vote if she wants to, because there's two items, so you wanna stay for, it'll, it'll be relatively quick.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
So I'll move to a juror, is that the last time I meet a juror?
Yeah, I'll move to a juror, is there a second?
Second?